Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Pennington County Planning Commission meeting of April 8th, 2024. Recommendations to the Planning Commission on certain items from the agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at their regular meeting on April 16th, 2024, at 10:30. And I usually mention that 10:30 is the approximate time for the planning-type items. The Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forms, which are available in the convention chambers in the back. If you're an applicant, you don't need to fill one out. Applicant or an agent of an item on the agenda. Roll call. We knew Kevin wasn't going to be here. He's looking at the moon or whatever. Important stuff. Boy, some people are really making some money on them moon watching today. Anyway.
There's birds, moons, whatever you want to watch.
And our liaison member is Deb. So we're all here, other than Kevin, let the record indicate that. Approval of minutes, the March 25th, 2024 meeting should be in, the minutes should be in your agenda packet as you picked it up. If you've had an opportunity to read them, Chair would take a motion to approve them.
I move we approve the minutes of the March 25th, 2024 meeting.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve the March 24th, 2024 meeting of the Pennington County Planning Commission. Discussion from the audience, from the Commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Agenda is similar, and it should have been in your packet, and you should have had an opportunity to review that before coming to the meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved and approved, moved and seconded to approve the agenda as submitted for the Pennington County Planning Commission, April 8th, 2024 meeting. Discussion from the Commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Brittany, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Molitor, Planning Director. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any Planning Commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners, who will make the final decision. Item four is Conditional Use Permit Review, CUR 20-21, for Pacific Properties LLC to review a mobile home park in a suburban residential district. And staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit Review, CUR 20-21, with conditions. Item number five is Conditional Use Permit Review, CUR 22-01, for Eric and Stephanie Thompson to review a vacation home rental in a rural residential district. And staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit Review, CUR 22-01, with conditions. Item six is Conditional Use Permit Review, CUR 22-49, for Leslie and Tina Wasson to review a caretaker's, or excuse me, a caregiver's residence in a suburban residential district. And staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit Review, CUR 22-49, with conditions. Item number seven is Conditional Use Permit Review, CUR 23-03, for Gerald and Julie Burdick to review a vacation home rental in a suburban residential district. And staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit Review, CUR 23-03, with conditions. And finally, item eight is Plan Unit Development Overlay Review, PUR 22-16, for Black Hills Weddings LLC to review a plan unit development overlay for a specialty resort. And staff recommends approval of Plan Unit Development Overlay Review, PUR 22-16, with conditions.
Thank you, Brittany. Anyone have an item to remove for clerical purposes?
Number four.
Number four. Staff have any to remove?
Number eight.
Number eight. Would the Commission like to remove any item other than the one for clerical? Anyone in the audience would like to have any of those that were scheduled for approval? We do do it with one vote for consent calendar. Chair to address a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move we approve consent agenda, item number five, six, and seven.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda to consist of item number five, number six, and number seven. Discussion from the audience, from the Commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number four.
Recommendation, number three, you have mobile homes should have a minimum 20-foot setback. We get back to property history and variance, you talk about 20 feet to six feet.
So this is Cody's staff report, I'll try the best I can to answer that. So it looks like, yeah, there was a variance on the property to allow lesser setback.
So that would be, number three would actually be a six-foot.
Those were for existing mobile homes. I'm not exactly sure what the condition reads right now, because like I said, it's Cody's report. But I do know they got that variance for existing mobile homes in the park, it didn't apply to new ones moving in.
Okay, so you're satisfied with?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we okay permit review, number CUR 20-21, make a motion to approve that.
Moved and seconded to approve per staff's recommendation, CUR 20-21. Discussion from the audience, from the Commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number eight.
Morning Commissioners, Jason Thedison, Assistant Planning Director. So I pulled number eight because there was a typo in the conditions or the criteria reviewed on this one. Number two in your packet, it says no, as far as the daily event operations being conducted by the owners. That should be yes. Just didn't want there to be any questions on that.
Hmm.
Staff did verify with the owners that that is true.
All right. Thank you, Jason. Is there a motion to approve per staff's recommendation?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move to approve per staff's recommendation with 16 conditions. Item number eight, I'm going to get back to the right number for the record. Excuse me, sometimes my hands aren't quite as fair. Item number eight is a review, PUR 22-16. Discussion from the audience, from the Commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We're on to item number nine.
Megan Talmadge, Planner. Agenda item number nine is Conditional Use Permit, COCU 24-0007, is to allow an accessory dwelling unit to be located in a detached garage. The applicant and owner is Andrew and Carlish Snyder. This is located at 6255 Nameless Cave Road. The current zoning is suburban residential, their access is off of Nameless Cave Road, there's no flood hazard on the property. The zoning ordinance lists seven criteria that the Planning Commission may consider in the review of a conditional use permit. They are listed on screen, this does meet the criteria. Additionally, accessory dwelling units also need to meet any criteria also listed on screen. The criteria is met. Within the interdepartmental review, there were a handful of issues raised. There appears to be an addition that was constructed to the single-family residence in 2021. It also appears that the residence does not meet the minimum setback. Additionally, the condition for the current approach was that a previous approach be removed, and either that approach must be removed or a permit must be filed. Staff has addressed all of these comments with as conditions. The proposed structure is 688 square feet, and the utilities will be connected to the existing utilities. As they are addressed as conditions, staff does not find significant issues with the current concerns on the properties and recommends approval with 17 conditions.
Questions for Megan, she's standing in for Christine, obviously. Go ahead.
I have a couple.
Go ahead.
I wondered if the property is currently being used as a long-term rental? You know, because I noticed, condition number 12 says the principal dwelling on the property be owner-occupied or utilized as a long-term rental, and the owners apparently live in Sioux City, Iowa.
The applicant and owner is actually here, if you have any questions for him, but it is a section in the zoning ordinance that specifically says that the ADU, or the ADU is either, they need the owner occupied status or it be a long-term rental, so.
Well, that's why I wondered if it was a long-term rental.
Yeah.
Okay. And the other question is, was the addition built by a contractor or by the applicant? Or do you know?
I do not know.
Interesting to know if it was a contractor without a building permit.
Additional questions for Megan? I've got one. If you look at the, well, I don't know what you'd call them, rapid map-style picture, is the white-roofed building the building we're talking about? Or is that one that, I can't find anything on the...
Honestly, I'm also not exactly sure on that.
Is it a white-roofed building?
Again, the applicant is here, he can answer any questions if needed.
Very good. Anything else for Megan? Okay, thank you, Megan. If you'd have the applicant come up and introduce himself, please.
I'm Andy Schneider.
Good morning. Is the white building that I caught there, is that the building that you planned to...
Well, like, all of them look white to me, so I'm not sure what you're talking about. The house is the brown building, the brown roof.
Yeah, there's brown roof there, there's a brown roof out, which I assumed was a, I looked at the detached garage, I figured that's a detached garage.
Oh, no, that's just a, that's a lean-to, like a carport, no foundation, nothing, just a carport.
But it's still bigger than 12 by 12, and I'll see, is that something that we, that should have a permit as well? I don't find any permit in our listing. Yeah, I was just, that's why I was going to have Megan come back up, too. I don't find any permit in our listing.
It's also...
Do one.
It's also dependent upon the year it was built, if that's existing, or if the Register of Deeds deems it as having no value, it's not even on their website. If it was built before 1994, then it wouldn't have a building permit.
Okay. Just was wondering if you'd list that, a question for Christine, though, to make sure, because we'd want to make sure that we get this all cleaned up for this gentleman.
Sure.
He doesn't want to come back, talk to us again.
No.
And I just found that, and it's a good size, I mean, it's a lean-to, but it's still a good-sized roof, and according to Department of Equilization, and we've cast dispersions on other ones that are 12 by 12 and made sure they're covered, so it's time to clean up while you're here. Any questions for Mr. Schneider?
Yes, at this point, so number 18, can you see on that, is that the detached garage?
That was built when I bought, before I bought the property, that was already there.
Yeah.
And that is a garage.
That's the one that we're going to...
No, no, the one that we're talking about is between, right between what he's discussing, the carport and the house, where you can see the excavation.
Oh, okay, I see that, all right.
So we have a garage by the house, rather than a nine iron away.
Yep, okay, makes, that's why I was curious about the sewage lines and things, how that was going to be.
Any of the golf.
This would be fine, sure, okay.
We do have a drawing of that, it's in, there's one where the new one is shown. I don't think there's a page number on it, but it's, it's there, I caught that, that's why I asked about the other one.
Yeah, well, I didn't know if that was it. Anyhow, I have no problem.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Schneider, is this a long-term rental, then?
Is what?
This, this house?
Oh, we've lived there for 18 years.
Well, okay, if I look at the conditional...
Whatever information you said earlier is totally wrong. We've owned and lived there for 18 years, and it's never been a rental.
Okay, now I'm confused, because the conditional use permit says 6253.
Oh, you mean what I'm building? What I'm building is just a, I would call it a mother-in-law apartment. My daughter just came from Sioux Falls, she'd have a private place to stay. That's the only, only thing, that little 600 and some square foot on top of the garage. Because the garage is built into, into the hill...
And the 6253 will be the address on that? It'll be different than your address?
On the garage?
Yes, both structures will have a separate address. Both living, the two living units will have separate addresses.
I guess I didn't do my reading.
And then the other question I had was, did you build the addition on the house?
Yes, I did. I've been a home builder for 50 years.
Okay.
Any other question for Mr. Schneider? Anything you'd like to say before?
No, I'm just a little confused that it's this difficult, my homeland, out of, out of city, to have a garage by my house, that's really all I want, instead of that garage that's literally worthless to us. It was James Van Nys, the artist, and he built it for a artist's studio, so he wanted it separate, but it does not serve as a garage. What I'm building is a garage that would serve for the house. And because it's built into the hill, and Jerry Bedkew, a very qualified cement contractor, has done it all just overkill, I thought, why not put a second story on there with living quarters, for when my family comes here, they'd have a private place to stay? Rather than our, in our little house with us.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Schneider, I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Anyone here to speak on this, other than Ms. Schneider? Chair to address a motion.
So move?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve per staff's recommendation with 17 conditions. Discussion from the audience, from the Commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number 10. Item number 10, we do have someone on Zoom, Kristen Bros. Are you there?
Yep, my husband and I are both here.
All righty. That's Hadley and Kristen.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Megan Talmadge, Planner. Agenda item number 10 is Conditional Use Permit, COCU 24-0009, and is to allow an efficiency dwelling to be located on the subject property. The applicants and owners are Hadley Eisenbys and Kristen Bros. This is located at 9612 Silver City Road. The current zoning is agriculture district. The access is just north of Silver City Road, but located off of Silver City Road, there's no flood hazard on the property. The zoning ordinance lists seven criteria that the Planning Commission may consider in review of conditional use permit applications, they are listed on the screen. In addition to the seven criteria, efficiency dwellings must also meet a criteria also listed on the screen. In the interdepartmental review, there were no major comments or concerns. Staff performed site visit on the subject property, and the existing shed does have an unpermitted porch. Building permit will need to be obtained to satisfy condition number 11, and a building permit will need to be obtained for the finished, for any finished space converting the shed to an efficiency dwelling. No address has been posted on the structure. An onsite wastewater treatment permit, permit must be obtained. Staff has not received any complaints or concerns regarding the subject property. Staff recommends approval of this conditional use permit with conditions.
Thank you, Megan. Questions for Megan and Lou Christine again? Anyone here in the audience that has a question or would desire to discuss this matter? Kristen, Hadley, do you want to weigh in here, or do you want to wait and see where we head from there?
We'll just wait, I guess.
All right, thank you.
We do plan on getting the permit for the deck.
And that, that was Hadley, I assume? He didn't sound like Kristen.
Correct.
Thank you, Hadley. Any other comments? Hearing none, Chair to address a motion.
Mr. Chair, move to approve Conditional Use Permit, COCU 24-0009?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve. COCU 24-0009, with 14 conditions per staff's recommendation to approve. Discussion from the audience, from the Commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number 11.
Morning Commissioners, Jason Thedison, Assistant Planning Director. Agenda item number 11 is Minor Plan Unit Development Amendment, COPU 24-0003. The owners are Paul and Ella Lindy. The location of the property is 24346 Eleanor Drive. It is 3.02 acres, currently zoned, planned unit development district, and it is vacant. Access is off Eleanor Drive, and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. Some property history is that the owners did draw a building permit last year for a single-family residence, also a non-site wastewater treatment system construction permit. The request was sent out for interdepartmental review, and staff received no objections or concerns. However, we did receive a letter of objection from a neighbor in the neighborhood.
And that has been included by Cody with our submission.
That is in your bag.
It's in the agenda.
Correct. Staff's analysis of the request is that the applicants are requesting to live in an RV while they construct a single-family residence. The applicants have stated the RV will be hooked to the onsite wastewater treatment system, and once the residence is complete, the RV will be stored on the property, but will not be connected to utilities or lived in. With that, staff recommends approval of Minor Plan Unit Development Amendment, COPU 24-0003. I'll stand for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Jason. Questions for Jason on this one? Anyone here in the audience to speak on this? Please come forward and introduce yourself, just for the record.
Paul Lindy, the owner of the property? I just wanted to, just curiosity what the objection was, to make sure that I can accommodate what maybe people had concerns on.
You may want to talk to him, it's living with the, in the RV, and yours has sufficient conditions that are normal, that we normally see as a Planning Commission, to cover that for the time period, and it's a review-type item with the Planning Commission where they hold you to those conditions.
Okay, I just want to make sure that I, you know, keep all the neighbors happy. So far, everybody's been great out there, love the area, so, okay, thank you. Certainly, I can give you a copy of it, certainly, thank you.
And we did cover that there is one objection to this, and it is in regards to, in fact, it's quote, "We object to the, living in the RD, RV while building the residence," so.
Move through.
Yes.
Do you already have that?
All right.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve per staff's recommendation, Plan Unit Development Amendment, COPU 24-0003, with 21 conditions. Discussion from the audience, from the Commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number 12.
Good morning, Commissioners. Item number 12 was previously heard by this Commission on March 11th, 2024, and it was approved unanimously. The reason it is in front of you again today is because after the meeting, we got notice from the Hill City Prevailor that it wasn't properly noticed in the newspaper, so staff is just asking, because it had to be re-advertized to this meeting, that it is heard again, and that staff is recommending approval of this Plan Unit Development Overlay, COPU 24-001, with conditions. I'm just asking for a new motion on this date because of the re-advertising.
Move approval.
Move to approve. PU, Plan Unit Development Overlay, COPU 24-0001, with 39 conditions per staff's recommendation to approve. Discussion. The only thing that I, I discussed, and I didn't know whether you were aware of, he was going to speak to the longtime property owner there that's right by this site, lives in what was always called the Pink House from...
Rockwell.
From Reptile, yeah.
Yes, and he has been in communication with that gentleman.
Yeah, that, I thought that was an excellent thing to do, and those people are fine folks, and they've been in here before, so thank you for answering them. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number 13.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we discuss items 13 through 16 together and vote on them separately.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded to consider items number 13, I'm going to go back to the cover for this one. 13, 14, 15, and 16 together. Before I, I mean, I wanted to make sure everybody feels comfortable with that. We have seen this a number of times, and I don't pick up anything that would be objectionable in including them. If anyone does, please speak up, because it does take a two-thirds vote of the Commission to pass this motion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We, you are allowed to introduce them together, and they will be discussed together, they will still be voted on individually as an agenda item. Thank you.
Megan Talmadge, Planner. Agenda item 13 is Preliminary Plan, COPPL 24-0004, and is to reconfigure lot lines within Pactola Heights subdivision. The applicant and owner is Pactola Heights LLC, with the acting member Ben Fosland. This is located near the intersection of Highway 44 West and Highway 385, along Chapel Court, Chapel Drive and Chapel Court. Current zoning is rural residential, as the previous rezones haven't taken effect yet. This item was seen before, and it was, and a preliminary plan was previously approved on February 20th, 2024. The turnaround shown on the plan was not located in the correct location. The right-of-way was supposed to be vacated up to that turnaround. It is now reflective of the correct location on the plat. And the applicant has also submitted a vacation of plat, and a comprehensive plan amendment and a rezone for the portion of right-of-way that they are looking to vacate further. The previous vacated right-of-way still is vacated, and so are the road names, this does not affect that. Item number 14 is the vacation of plat for the new right-of-way being vacated. And item number 15 and 16 is... item number fifteen and sixteen is the comprehensive plan amendment and rezone for the right-of-way being vacated. Um, staff recommends approval on all items. The only thing that is changed is the vacation of right-of-way and a slight realignment of the lots.
Questions for Megan? I've got one Megan, not, we, we're burning right along here, if you look at your drawing where the turnarounds are at, I assume that the, uh, highway departments reviewed these, the one is right at the, where we're vacating, and the other one's down from a, a couple of three lots, but I assume it's something they've worked out with our highway department in regards to where they want them located? Is that anything you're aware of?
There actually hasn't been much discussion with the highway department, um, they're in the middle of forming a road district, I believe that that has been approved, I'm not sure when exactly it has been, when it will take effect. But they have gone in front of the Board of Commissioners, uh, to get a road district. But the ordinance fourteen still does apply, so they will have to provide diagrams, um, and then we'll have to go out to verify that those turnarounds do meet ordinance fourteen standards when the final plat's
And the location of it, so it still goes back to, I see where it's drawn in, or Mr. Davis has it, uh, off of, uh, I can't even read those numbers.
It's, it's a lot
Seventeen and, I can't read the other lot number, rather than all the way down to eighteen or nineteen. Do you see what I'm saying, instead of the turnaround being at the end? That's the only thing I can see, but I assume they're still providing road to those other lots, so.
Yes.
I'm not sure what the highway department requires as far as the turnaround with the location, but it, it's normally at the end, this one isn't at the end. Any other questions for Megan? We've looked at it a number of times, so, if you got one, it's time to do it, I think this is probably gonna fly through and this is it, and they can go.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Move approval of Preliminary Plan COPPL twenty-four triple zero four.
Second.
Moved and second to approve Preliminary Plan COPPL two-four zero 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 four. And it has eight conditions. Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, on to item number fourteen.
Mr. Chair? Move to approve Vacation of Plat COPP twenty-four zero 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 four.
Second.
Moved and second to approve per staff's recommendation COPP two-four dash zero 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 four with two conditions. Discussion from the audience. From the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Chair?
Motion carried, yeah.
I move that we approve Comprehensive Plan Amendment COCA twenty-four dash zero 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 four pursuant, pursuant to staff's recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and second to approve COCA two-four dash zero 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 four per staff's recommendation. Discussion from the audience, from the commission, hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to the next, is that it?
Nope.
No, one more, yeah. Item number sixteen.
Mr. Chair, move approval of rezone CORZ twenty-four triple zero five.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and second to approve per staff's recommendation CORZ two-four dash zero 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 five per staff's recommendation, would be no conditions. Discussion from the audience, from the commission, hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number seventeen, isn't necessary for the record? We do not need an executive session today, on to item number eighteen.
Item number eighteen is the County Board Report, uh, the Board of Commissioners concurred with the Planning Commission's recommendations from the March twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four Planning Commission meeting.
Questions? Items from public, our public vanished again.
What public?
We cheer our heart on the public, aren't we, you guys should be so lucky. To get rid of the public like we do.
Be nice to them and they won't show
Yeah, they don't like us.
Until next time.
Okay, items from the staff, building permit report.
Um, just find the building permit report, we are starting to see an uptick in the number of building permits this year from last year. Um, last week was busy, so we're just seeing that again, so.
Anybody have questions for written and the building permits? Items from the membership, I took the liberty of passing them out, but I wanted y'all to know that, um, and I believe we gotta refer to it as the, the gentleman, it's the Mexico typical was the request, it was, uh, and it's from Mr. Estes, uh, not directly from him, it was forwarded from him, and I do have a report back from the people that are doing the firework there, and you should all have a, had an opportunity to read it, and I did make one available to Jerry for the record, so I'll have to compliment them, they have followed on the procedures we asked.
Rich, who's from the Hydraulic Solutions, um, that company is just a very professional company. We've used them for sprinklers that we need for, and like I said, um, when he was here, everything he's ever said, he does, so, I appreciated that, he followed through with us and updated us on what they did for, uh, that restaurant, so, that was cool.
That's a true statement, that's, we, we didn't request it, it was forwarded to me, and just for the record, I wanted to make sure it was on, because we did include that in our instructions where we pass that and let them move forward so they can get ready for their coming year. But it appears they've got one item, uh, per this, one item left, and that's the patio, and it, they actually needed another piece of equipment to get the pressures right throughout the whole system for that, but in the meantime, daily, they were making sure the rest of the system was available at this time. And that one is dated, uh, March thirty-first. Any other items from the membership?
Mr. Chair, move to adjourn.
Second.
Move to adjourn, and second. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned, thank you.